All right, welcome everyone to the February 1st meeting of the zoning subcommittee. Yes, it is February already. First item on our agenda is announcements and minutes. The only announcement I have is that similar to the structure of the meeting last week, this is intended as a working session of the subcommittee, although we do have an agenda item for public comment, that we will take comment from the public at the end of the meeting if people want to direct their comments to us. But for the bulk of the meeting, we will be discussing the Village Center rezoning proposals amongst ourselves. Minutes, I don't think we have any minutes yet from our previous minutes?
No, I apologize, I have them next to.
No problem. So, we can move directly into our work on Village Center planning for North and South Amherst. Mr. Tucker, I appreciate the summary that you sent out, which is available on the back table as well, from our meeting last week, which really dealt almost entirely with South Amherst. We have an updated map of South Amherst proposed zoning changes that is updated as of the discussion that we had last week. The most significant changes being to remove the portions of the southeasternmost portions of the Atkins Corner zoning district on the east side of 116, rather than proposing that to be Atkins Corner, to change that to be RVC, to match the zoning across the street on the west side of 116. And also to take the portions just southeast of the two new roundabouts out of the Atkins Corner district as well. Those are, the designation here Jonathan says RO to RLD, so that's currently RO, is that what that designates?
Yes, that's correct. There is a setback of RO from the original roadway.
Mm-hmm.
That's vestigial. The intent is to change it to RLD, as was done along the south side of Bay Road in the proposal in the fall. I'm sorry, can people hear me?
They'll hear you better if you bring the mic a little bit closer. The property lines in question for that property in, at the, just south of the roundabouts, there's several sets of blue lines there, are those all property lines, the thinner ones?
Those are all, the thin ones are all property lines, and it is the, you could say that the two promontories, the two triangles proceeding southeast were the areas that were removed from AC, and now are proposed to go to RLD for those portions which are not now RLD.
Mm-hmm.
That would make that consistent again with what was being done on the south side of Bay Road.
And so, the Atkins Corner, under this map, the Atkins Corner would be contiguous only through the roadway there, the portion to the northeast and the portion, the main portion?
Yes, yes.
That would just extend along the roadway?
One of the reasons we were calling it Corners, plural.
Anybody have any questions or comments on the South Amherst changes from last week?
I think it looks good.
Yeah, I think it looks good as well. I think that those changes strengthen it, and I don't think we have much more to do with this at this point. We still have the question of the overlay districts, but I don't want to get into that right now, I'd rather get into that when we talk about North Amherst and the areas around the North Amherst Village Center, but that is an item I'd like to come back to at some point. All right, so, let's turn our attention at this point to the map of North Amherst, and start looking at what we would like to do there. We have on the, we have a handout on the back table that shows a broad overview of protected lands in North Amherst on one side, and a more detailed map of the area north of Cowell's Road on the other side. We don't have a current map showing the proposal from last fall of the, it's the big map that's on the wall there, there's no handout. I'm still working from the one that I have from my packet from last fall. So, Mr. Tucker and I were briefly discussing earlier the designation that's on the back half of the backside of the map that's on the back table, which shows the blue area being the 200-foot river resource area. Jonathan, could you explain the import of that designation?
It is one of three levels of environmental protection over lands immediately adjacent to Eastman Brook. The first is the flood-prone conservancy district, which operates as a setback, and I believe it's a 50-foot setback, but I have to go and check the map, from the banks of the stream currently, it's a perennial stream. The second is the wetland, the 100-foot wetland buffer, wherever the edge of the bordering vegetated wetland is identified as, and since we don't have a determination on that, we're just using the edge of the bank, but it may be further out, there may be marshy areas along the stream there. And then there, finally, what's shown here is, under the River Resource Act, there is a 200-foot resource area that receives differing levels of protection, again, from the local conservation commission, for perennial streams and rivers, rivers that flow all year. Within the first 100 feet, there's essentially no activity at all. There are limited kinds of activity that the local conservation commission can allow within the second 100 feet, and part of, part of the reason to map this, we could have mapped other areas as well, was in the context of this larger map, which also shows, if you look at it, the prospective 100-year floodplain based on the flood insurance rate maps from the 1980s, to indicate that there are environmental protections in place for the existing natural resources in the vicinity, particularly the water resources. The mapping of the 200-foot river resource area north of Coles Road and south of Eastman Brook does not mean that nothing can happen there, it means that there, whatever happens there would be strongly regulated by the conservation commission, particularly in the shaded blue areas. That might argue for looking at a slightly different zoning designation in that area other than NABC, since full-blown mixed-use development there would be difficult, given the environmental conditions. Not impossible, but difficult. It might, it might not, the point of this was to demonstrate the existing protections that are already in place. Again, that larger map also shows lands that are already owned or protected in other ways by the public, which pretty much ring the Village Center. There are some unprotected lands, or lands that are not protected by forms of ownership, but those, for the most part, are controlled by environmental protections. There are a few spots where the former trucking company was at the corner, Pulpit Hill Road and Montague Road, that land has also been farmed over the years, and there is some low-density residence farmland conservation zoning on that property already that protects it at some level.
That's the large dark green property?
Well, the dark green property is actually a conservation restriction on the property associated with the Pulpit Hill co-housing.
Okay.
Development. I'm talking about the properties immediately south of that, south of Pulpit Road.
Oh, south of Pulpit Hill Road, okay.
There are also properties north of this area that are owned by the Mitchells, by the Pattersons and others, the Zollas, that are in professional research park zoning, they're already designated for a specific purpose, although they are to an extent currently used for farming. But this was intended to provide you with context for the levels of protection that exist, that's not to say that more, more can't be created or shouldn't be created, it's simply to provide you with a baseline of what's there now.
Thank you. Question about the 100-year floodplain that's shown here, it's my understanding that the 100-year floodplain in and of itself doesn't confer any special protection to the land, its use as the, more or less, the boundary of flood-prone conservancy that makes it relevant?
No, right now, the zoning in the area, the flood-prone conservancy district is set at 75 feet back from the bank, basically from the eastern edge of the Mill River Recreation Area, all the way to the point just south of Meadow Street on the west side of 116.
Mm-hmm.
The 100-year floodplain, there are federal regulations as well as state regulations enforced by local agents that speak to how development and if development can occur in that area. You cannot, for instance, some of you may remember when we were doing the site plan review for the storage facility on the Laverdior property on Meadow Street, that there was a considerable amount of discussion about even the protrusion of a parking lot, or a portion of a parking lot into that area. So, it is regulated, it's not prohibited, but it is regulated strongly enough in some ways that essentially it's very difficult to put something there that might ever be impacted in a negative way by flooding. There's a distinction between the floodplain and the floodway, which is the area within which water travels rapidly during flooding. Floodplain is simply the area that's inundated when flooding occurs. I would note again that these, these lines which are approximate, were done on the computer using the topographic elevations which you can see on the streams, were indicated in 1981 maps, may well be outdated, that we have been having a steady increase of rainfall, about three inches in the last 100 years, annually, and we anticipate that it's going to be more so, so that this area may grow. But this is, just to give again, sort of a baseline sense of, based on information we have now, these are the levels and kinds of protections that exist.
Thank you. All right. So, in terms of the map, looking at what we might want to think about and talk about, the main issue, some of the main issues that have been raised that need to be addressed are obviously the section along Montague Road that we had looked at last year as RVC, whether we think that's appropriate or not. We've had some discussion about the property south of the Mill River entrance versus the properties north of there, just overall consideration of that is obviously a major issue. Another item that has been raised is the section of NABC north of Coles Road, which is partially the area that we've just been talking about along the floodplain of the Mill River, that that river resource area that Jonathan was just describing cuts through, as well as the large areas to the west of NABC that again, are traversed by the, those are traversed by the Mill River, that's not the Mill River to the north of Coles, Cowell's Road, is it Jonathan?
It's Eastman Brook.
Oh, it's Eastman Brook, okay, thanks. That joins the river further to the west. Yeah, okay. So, those are some of the major issues that I think we need to talk about and think about. Any other areas that you guys think are relevant or important to discuss? Bruce?
Well, I think another consideration too is what do we want to do about the form-based code, and if there's to be an overlay district through that, that area?
I've noticed a couple people coming in late, so I'll just repeat the announcement that I made at the beginning of the meeting, just in case people are waiting to address the board. We're intending this as a working meeting tonight, but we will take public comment toward the end of the meeting if you have input for us, but I'll ask people to hold their thoughts until we're done with our working discussion here. Thank you.
Bruce?
Well, I had brought this up in a previous meeting, and I wanted to mention it again. I wondered about the possibility, if most of Montague Road would be left as it is now as residential, but the properties that are adjoining the Mill River, just to the north of the Mill River, that might be neighborhood business, if that would be a less dense usage, and yet it would allow some businesses.
Could you repeat the area that you're talking about?
Just the lots that are directly above the river.
North of the Mill River and south of the entrance to the Mill River Recreation Area?
Correct, that's correct.
So, that's with, that's a subset of the area that we had proposed for RVC last time around. I think, generally speaking, that the uses allowed under neighborhood business would be a bit more intense than those allowed under RVC, is that an accurate statement, Jonathan?
That's correct. Oh, there would be, yeah.
RVC, basically, the only business use that is allowed, other than home businesses, which are allowed as accessory uses anywhere under the right permits, are mixed uses where the residential uses are in the same building with a very selected group of offices, and those office uses are the ones that have the fewest visitors, it's mostly people who go, who work there, who go to those offices, it's not, it's not like banks or insurance companies or something like that. It's, so the RVC, the principal difference is it's slightly denser.
Could you speak directly in the background?
I'm terribly sorry, sort of question of who I'm facing here. RVC is, well, BN, the district that Mr. Carson is discussing, is denser and more intense than RVC, Village Center residents. Village Center residents is slightly denser than neighborhood residents, and in Village Center residents, the only business use that is permitted is a mixed use, meaning a building that contains both residential units and, in this case, office uses, and of office uses only a selected range.
So, I guess my sense would be that BN and that area would, might be a bit more intense than would probably be appropriate?
Okay. Well, I was just thinking that some people had said they didn't really object to businesses, they were more worried about residences. That's why I wondered if perhaps businesses would be less controversial there than a residence would be, but... In the neighborhood business, would it be, it's just residents above the businesses, is that correct?
That's what Jonathan just described, yes.
Okay.
Well, that's not strictly true, there are, in neighborhood business, there are residence-only uses, multi-unit uses that are permitted.
Okay.
They are, they are, in terms of dimensions, he said, checking the dialogue quickly, they are approximately analogous to those of the RVC district, but once you get past the first unit, they are more dense.
Okay. Yeah. I don't think that would be the best proposal then.
Well, townhouses and apartments would be permitted by, in neighborhood business, by special permit.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So, looking at the northern part of Montague Road, north of the Mill River, north of the entrance to the Mill River Recreation Area, I'll say that my preference would be that we not look at RVC zoning there. I think that it's more appropriate to keep RN, as we've heard a lot of feedback on that, on that point. That seems pretty clear to me.
Sure.
I see Bruce nodding his head. Rob, do you have any thoughts on that?
Are you talking about west of Montague Road?
No, I'm talking about both east and west of Montague Road, north of the entrance to the Mill River Recreation Area.
Okay.
So, and I'm keeping the area south of that as an open item that we'll come to next, but I think we might have agreement on the northern section, but anyway, go ahead.
I think it's, it seems like the residents in that area agree with that, but I think it's not necessarily the best use of that land. I think it's, I think it might be, I guess I would ask, is it a compromise to consider RVC zoning along the entire length of the west side of Montague Road? In other words, not, not the Coles Homestead corner there as, as NABC or BVC or whatever, but consider that also RVC. Does that, does that make it more palatable? I think that might be better zoning, although maybe, maybe it's not possible to pass that the first time around, long range.
If I may, first, let me see if I, make sure I understand what you're, what you're counter-proposing here, and that is to have, instead of a mix of RVC and RN and then NABC at the corner of Coles and Montague Road, you are proposing that the entire western side of Montague Road between the river and Coles Road be RVC, and that the trade-off there is the removal of the NABC on the Coles Homestead.
Correct.
W D Coles Homestead. Okay.
So, are you talking just about the west side?
Just the west side.
Or what would happen on the east side?
I think we should give up on the east side.
You think we should what?
Give up on the east side.
Meaning leave it as RN?
Leave it as RN, yeah.
Bruce?
There was an idea expressed at the public hearing of, on those properties on the western side of Montague Road, if there would be any new activity, it would be at the back of the properties, and the entrance and egress would have to be into that triangle there, which I thought was a very interesting idea. In other words, it wouldn't lead to any more traffic on Montague Road, there would be some sort of a new, whether a private street or a public street behind, and any function, any new buildings at the back of those properties would go out onto that.
Right, so it wouldn't lead directly to traffic on Montague Road?
Correct, yes.
Potentially lead indirectly to traffic?
Yes, but I mean, it, people would be pulling out into that lane.
Yep.
And then going up to Coles Road.
Is, in some ways, it complicates matters, but we have two proposals on the table, let's put a third one on the table. How about including the properties that are at least, let's see, one, two, at least four of the properties that are south of the Mill River Recreation Area, possibly five, but four of them as, as RVC on both sides, RN for the next two or three, or four properties to the north, and then RVC as the frontage, the first 100 feet, the first 150 feet of the Coles Homestead facing Montague Road, so that the uses that could occur there are predominantly residential, and then the NABC doesn't touch anywhere along Montague Road. It's more complicated, but it tries to, as planners often do, tries to accommodate everybody's needs.
Could you repeat that, Jonathan? Just the outline?
The first two properties, let me limit, limit it first, and then maybe we'll expand it later. The first two or three properties on the west side of Montague Road.
Yep.
Owned by the Puffer-Gurney family in this case, and the first two properties on the east side would be zoned RVC.
Mm-hmm.
Although the setback of the, the district line is negotiable there. Then the next, one, two, three properties, two properties that are delineated, and the property which, the portion of the property that includes 116 Montague Road, which is the house immediately south of the Coles Homestead, those would be RN with the RVC overlay.
RN with the...
Oh, excuse me, RVF overlay, I apologize. And then on the Coles Homestead, the first 100, 150, 120, I don't know what would be a sensible, so, splitting where the buildings are, the first 100-plus feet back from the frontage on the Coles Homestead would be RVC.
Do you want me to play Vanna White, and I'll hold up this map and you can show everybody?
Sure. Well, the people here are looking, sure.
Do it once in this direction?
Sure, sure. We really should have a big thing with a tissue paper over it.
Here's the river, the first three properties on this, on the west side.
Let's see, oh, west side, okay.
On the west side, which takes you about to the Mill River entrance, correct?
It takes you opposite, or just, just south of the Mill River Recreation Area entrance.
So, those three properties would be RVC.
With boundaries more or less as drawn there, and that was the negotiated part that you discussed?
Right.
Because we've heard of issues with following the property lines there, okay?
Right.
And then these two properties here would also be RVC.
Again, both properties south of the entrance to the Mill River Recreation Area?
Correct.
And then these would be RN?
Properties on, actually on both sides.
Basically, all the remaining portions of that peach area would be RN?
Correct.
And then the first 100 feet here would be RVC, and the back would be NABC.
Correct.
So, that, that would more or less cut that little protrusion of NABC, there would still be a protrusion, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't extend all the way to Montague Road.
It would have an arrival point, but it would be principally residential.
So, I think what you're talking about is, here's Montague Road and here's the river, and you're talking about the first three properties on the west side of Montague Road would be RVC, and the first two properties on the east side of Montague Road, south of the entrance to the Mill River Recreation Area, would be RVC, so these properties, this little cluster here would be RVC. And then this side and this side, north of the entrance to Mill River, to the Recreation Area, would be RN, and then you would jump over to the Coles property, and the front 100-foot setback, the front 100 feet, the setback in the road, would be RVC, that would be similar to this, and then beyond that would be NABC.
To the west.
Does that make sense?
And bear in mind, this, this is one of three proposals now floating around like tinker toys.
So, one side effect of that, or not really side effect, but one outcome of that would be a little island of RVC zoning on the Montague Road frontage of the Coles Homestead property, which is not necessarily bad, but it looks a little bit strange.
Well, it would depend, we were talking before, it depends what else you do, we were talking before about what happens on the north side of sort of the central area of Coles Road, which is most affected by environmental regulations. It might be that some portion of that area would be RVC as well. And then it would not be so isolated.
So, all right. Rob, going back to your proposal, I'm having a little bit of trouble with the idea of the two sides of the road being different, I'm not sure whether that would necessarily be the best thing, because the, the road is now somewhat uniform in character once you get north of the Mill River Recreation Area, and so, I'm not sure I see a good basis for treating the two sides separately. I see the, I see the uses changing along that road as you proceed from south to north, and not so much from east to west, even though there is a, a western intensification too, but that's just my initial reaction to that. Any other thoughts or comments? We've characterized these as three separate ideas here, just to clarify a little bit, I think what's being treated as the first idea was what I was just sketching out in the beginning, which was essentially what Jonathan just described, except for the island of RVC on the frontage, Montague Road frontage of the Coles Homestead property. I was picturing basically that, well, we could do several things with that, but mostly what I was envisioning was taking away the RVC zoning north of the entrance to Mill River Recreational Area, and, and keeping the existing RN in that area, so that, that's mostly what Jonathan described as well. All right. Comments, further comments?
May I discuss one of the other pieces that you had talked about here?
Yes.
When you, if you look at the map of protected lands, and you look at Sunderland Road, and where that, where that boundary is, that approximately, although not entirely, describes the buildable area west of Sunderland Road. There is some more buildable area... area west of Sunderland Road. There is some more buildable area, other than this is not an absolutely precise delineation. But as a consequence, we might wish to change the NAVC line along the west side of Sunderland Road, and instead have perhaps a residential zoning with the form-based overlay to control the design of nature trails and so forth, which is the purpose that we had discussed for having NAVC there in the first place.
I very much would like to do that. I very much would like to get rid of NAVC on the western areas that are essentially within that, or largely within that floodplain. I understand the point about controlling the design of the nature trails, but I don't really think that that's a major aspect of this proposal. You know, particularly smaller trails, once you get off the river, so we had talked about a mixed use path along the river or something like that, which might have some relevance, but once you get away from the river and you're talking about, you know, foot trails and things like that through the open space there, I don't think it's particularly important that we have form-based regulations there. So I guess I would argue in favor of not even trying to apply a form-based overlay to that district, to that area.
The only thing I can think of is that it is possible, under the zoning as it stands, for an outdoor recreation facility of some kind to be proposed, even on residential, residentially-zoned land, under a special permit. And you might want to have form controls over that, although it's not clear to me how the form controls already devised would affect that. But you might nonetheless wish to have that control under extensive uses, an outdoor recreational use.
So an extensive use, though, would by definition not really involve much in the way of built infrastructure, right? It would be large-scale uses of the land itself, not building things on the land?
There could be structures associated with an outdoor recreation facility, depending on what kind it is.
But not really within that floodplain, though, right?
The kinds of structures that are either permanent and not inhabited might well be allowed in the floodplain, not in the floodway, and they would have to be built in a certain way, so that they don't join other things floating down the river when it floods. But they might well occur in that area.
Okay. So, I see that, but I'll restate my viewpoint, that I don't really see us needing to bend over backwards and really contort the proposal in order to get form-based regulations on that open land that might potentially have some sort of uninhabited structure on it at some point in the future. And even if we saw a proposal like that coming down the road at some point, we could always revisit and look to apply overlay district or something like that.
I believe that a portion of that area, much of that area, is zoned commercial now. And so we would need to propose an alternative to that. So just be thinking about that.
Yeah, thank you. Do you know, do we have a current, I don't have a current zoning map in front of me?
Current map's right down here. You can see the red.
Probably goes all the way out to 116.
Actually, it stays on the, it does, all the way out on the north side of the river.
Goes to the edge of the river?
It's outside the river. It does not.
Yep. And the green area to the north of that is RO? Or no, is that PRP up there?
PRP.
And the yellow is RO?
I believe so, yes.
Could you turn that around, Chris, for the folks in the audience? Thanks.
We're talking about this red area, which is commercial. This area up here, which is PRP. And this area, this yellow area, is RO. And this is the FSC, which is Farmland Conservation. And the gray stripes are farms. The gray stripes are RLDFC, which is farmland conservation.
If I may, there's the zoning designation on top of the Schwartz Farm. The Schwartz Farm is also an APR. That graphic is not intended to demonstrate the APR, but rather the zoning. And so it's low-density residence with a farmland conservation overlay, is what, yeah.
That's the clarification. I wanted to point out, they were, I wanted to point out what you just said, and I'm glad you said it.
Thank you. Chris?
I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that farmland conservation doesn't mean that it's conservation land. It just means that if you were to develop it as a residential use, you would have to develop it using a cluster subdivision type of use. So the attempt is that you try to save as much of the open land as possible, but you still allow development to happen there, unless, of course, it's within the 100-year floodplain or something like that.
And that's an overlay district, right, Chris?
That's correct.
That's right.
Okay. Any thoughts or comment on the current item of discussion, which is reducing the scope of NAVC in the area west of the frontage along Sunderland Road?
Sounds good.
So, it sounds good, meaning that you're in agreement with what I'm proposing, which is basically taking that away and not replacing it with an overlay district or something equivalent?
Obviously, we want to have the discussion about the overlay district. I don't mind whether we have it or not.
Okay.
So, but I think changing it from con to something that is not NAVC is what I'm talking about.
So in terms of what that something would be, sorry, Bruce, did you have something?
I just have a slight misgiving, because I know the people in that area are so worried about a lot more residences, and I guess that makes me a little concerned. Just hoping to get enough support for this.
The area that we're talking about behind the, behind essentially the commercial activity that fronts on Sunderland Road, doesn't have any, it doesn't have any frontage. I don't think none of those properties have frontage on Sunderland Road, do they, Jonathan?
Well, actually, the, there is a property that has two frontages on Sunderland Road, but you, in order to get over to the west side in any dry area, you would have to pass through the 100-year floodplain and wetland areas and so forth, and that would be a challenge. The area south of the river that was included in the NAVC district last fall is currently zoned neighborhood residence, but it's completely cut off from the village center by the river, and its frontage is along Route 116, which is a limited access state highway, and that's not going to change, so.
Maybe I misunderstood. Were you suggesting, Jonathan, that on the west side of Sunderland Road, there would still be a strip that would be for the NAVC, or that all of it would be?
Yes.
Oh, all right. I misunderstood.
That's what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting, and I'm looking at a map that you don't have in front of you, but if you look at the one that has the orange on it, which doesn't really show the property lines, but on this one where you can see the ghosted property lines, I would suggest that something that more or less follows the main thrust of the property lines, this is Sunderland Road here, west of Sunderland Road, retain the NAVC that's currently there.
Okay, no, I agree with that.
But once you get beyond the sort of back edges of those properties, there's a large stretch that, this portion here, north of the river, where there's nothing there now, it's all almost entirely, it appears to be almost entirely, within the 100-year floodplain. And I think it's accurate to say that there's no way you could build a house within the 100-year floodplain, could you?
I don't believe you could, no.
So you couldn't have any residential uses going in there?
You'd have to put it on stilts.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought you meant west of Sunderland Road would change, okay.
And I might have said that, but what I really meant was west of the frontage along Sunderland Road.
Okay, no, that reassures me, okay.
In terms of what to replace that with, would RO be?
RO, or RL, RLD with an FCO overlay?
I'm not sure which it is.
It's currently farm-farmed. Parts of it are. That's, it's up to you. Right now, the area south of the river is RN, and that's really a vestige of other things changing around it over time.
So the Schwartz Farm is RN?
The Schwartz Farm is RLDFC.
RLDFC.
Yeah, and that's, I believe Ms. Lacour is attempting to provide information here.
Do you have a question for us, or?
No, I'd like to clarify something I didn't.
Sure. Could I ask you to come up and use the mic? Thanks. And identify yourself, please.
Sarah Lacour, Precinct 9, and WD Coles. The area that you're speaking of, west of Sunderland, west of Sunderland Road, Coles owns a chunk that goes around two sides of what Scott Leonard's little farmhouse there. We have actually had that area, we've had wetlands delineated, we've had them surveyed, and there is upland area in there. I think the map is misleading by just saying that whole area couldn't be built on.
Okay.
So I just would like you to be aware that there is upland in there, because we did have it surveyed and flagged.
And that's something that Coles might potentially be interested in utilizing?
Well, it's developable upland area, so we would like to have you aware of that, rather than just sort of writing it off as it seems to be happening.
Thanks. Jonathan?
I was not recommending, and am not recommending, that the zoning district boundaries follow the 100-year floodplain. I think that, I've seen that information, and I've seen other information about what is developable or buildable there. For instance, if you look at the protected lands map, there's a, west of Sunderland Road, there's a 162. You see the number 162? Immediately to the right and below that is one of the areas that has access from frontage on the property that Ms. Lacour was referring to, and our computer sketch may misrepresent the extent of that area. It may be larger. So, when drawing the NAVC line, we would probably want to stay west of areas like that, and allow for possibility, not cut off possibility.
Yes.
But areas where there clearly is nothing should probably be left out.
Yeah, it's hard to say what you could use as a boundary back there, but you'd need to have a more detailed map than the one that we're looking at here, I guess.
Yes, we could look at that next time. I could provide you with a sort of a graphic representation of what you decide to do this evening, and then we can chew on that.
Okay. Let's leave that as an open discussion item, as is the one along Montague Road, for the time being, because I have a feeling that we'll hear some feedback from folks on both of those, potentially, definitely Montague Road. So, and that was a good, useful discussion. I guess the last, the last point I wanted to discuss specifically was a continuation of that same discussion, but south of the Mill River. The map here doesn't cover as much of that area, but there is, the previous proposal had NAVC extending all the way out, almost to the 116 right of way, all the way to the 116 right of way, on both sides of the Mill River, north and south. And I also feel that the areas on the south side of the Mill River could be removed from NAVC without really having much impact. There's sort of that finger. I'm not sure what the, what the boundary follows here, Jonathan? Is that, does that go through the Schwartz Farm?
Property boundary, yes.
Or is that the boundary of the Schwartz Farm?
It is.
Okay.
However, when it proceeds south, the line proceeds south, that is dividing the Schwartz Farm. You will recall that part of the intent here was to include portions of the farm in the NAVC district to enable the kinds of agricultural uses and activity that had been discussed at many of the meetings.
This whole thing is the Schwartz Farm, right?
Correct.
And, and under the proposal that we had last fall, the eastern, southern-eastern portion of the farm would have been NAVC, as would have been the land to the north of the farm, up to the Mill River.
Correct.
So I guess I would, I would suggest for consideration, maybe keeping the portion that's on the Schwartz Farm, but not keeping the, you know, since we're already talking about not extending it along the north side of the Mill River, it would kind of make sense not to have it on the south side of the Mill River, too. And I think the same sorts of arguments would apply there. Mr. Tucker has pointed out that the form-based regulations could potentially be useful in controlling the form of a nature trail or something along the river, but that's not, to me, that's not of top priority.
I would agree with that.
Okay. All right. You guys have further thoughts on the map at this point? Because I'm thinking at this point, it would be a good time to hear public comment. We've laid a bunch of items out there, and I'm sure people have things to comment on. Is that okay with you guys? Okay. So, we'll take public comment at this point on the, on the general concepts that we've been discussing about boundaries on the map. We've had discussion of Montague Road. We've had discussion of the areas to the west of Sunderland Road. So if you have detailed questions about sort of uses that are allowed or not allowed, we haven't really talked about that yet, so I'd prefer not to get into that at this point, but try to confine your comments to whatever degree you can, to the sort of geographic aspects that we've been discussing here. So, Ms. Lacour, first hand up. And I will ask folks to use the microphone at the front of the room. We're being recorded on ACTV, and even though you might be able to hear us in the room, they can't hear you on TV unless you speak into the mics. Thank you.
Is it okay, last time? Sarah Lacour again. So, a similar issue to this map. We, again, we had had the wetlands delineated on this, and we had the edge of bank delineated, and the 200-foot boundary identified and surveyed. And so this, this map is a little misleading in a couple of ways. One, the boundary is a little different than this, but also, if you look under it, because of its translucency, the building footprints and the brown areas are what are considered degraded areas.
Yes.
And you can use those square footages in your second 100 feet and outside of the buffer. So, having the 200, I think it's misleading to make it seem like nothing can happen in those 200 feet, because the disturbed areas that we already have, we are allowed to use that density. So, and also, anything we mitigate out of that first 100, so some of the, there's a little shed, there's various disturbed areas, things that we are mitigating in that first 100, we also get that square footage. So, I would just like you to think about that, that it seems to me that this map is misleading.
Thank you for that clarification. I think we do have an understanding of that, and Mr. Tucker did describe earlier, it might have been before you came in, he made the point explicitly, that it's not the case that nothing can happen within that boundary. And also the fact that the boundaries as drawn here are basically just a sketch from a rough look at the elevations in the town's GIS system, but certainly don't represent a detailed ground survey.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions or comments for us? Yes, Ms. Keller?
I better bring my books, because I've got maps. The last few weeks have been fun with maps.
Janet Keller, 120 Pulpit Hill Road. So, I hate this thing.
You don't have to be super close, just have it within range.
Okay. If we could talk just a little bit and clarify a little bit here about the flood zones and the floodways, the velocity zone, if you will, the place where everything gets swept away and your belongings get put out on the sidewalk in the mud. I hear the point that's being made about the legal stuff, and as you know, I have to share your concern with that, because it is, it's a fait accompli. And I still want to bring up and ask, and I very much appreciate your, Mr. O'Keefe, bringing, where you can, bringing things back from that zone, because we keep learning that lesson again and again. It may be legal, you may have the money to do it, you may have whatever, but the river doesn't know that. And the rain doesn't know that. And the next thing we know, we've got a golf course that floods every time the Fort River goes over and it closes, to name one example. So what I'm really after here is we create real value for everyone. And I think that's, I think you share that vision. So, and I have to tell you, I wasn't, you guys covered a lot of ground, so I can't tell you that I've absorbed it all at this point. I see things that make me go eek, but I can't articulate all of that at this point. I particularly don't want to wade into the Montague Road stuff. I have, except to note to you that I have concerns, and I'm going to go away and think about it, because you said many, many things. The one thing that it did occur to say, to me to say, and I hope I find the words to say this, that captures what I mean. Okay? We've begun to talk a little, and I've been reading a lot of stuff, and zoning transfers value. If you change the zoning, then value moves from one side of somebody's ledger to the other side of someone else's. That's what makes this so hard here. And it occurs to me, and I don't envy you trying to make an accommodation with this, that there's two kinds of accommodation. And one of those gives value to somebody, but it comes from somebody. And that makes it really tough. And in this case, the owners and the holders of the larger acreage would gain value. And residents would be feeling like they're losing something. And that just came into my mind, and I just offer it there, and I hope you'll accept it in the spirit in which it's offered. It occurred to me, and I thought I'd just put it out there, that that's part of what makes this so hard. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, I think I'll, no, I'll leave that. I very much appreciate, I want to leave on that note of, in addition to trying to pull things away out of harm's way, the offer of the graphic representation of what you spoke about, having the printed summary of what you folks decided at the previous meeting was enormously helpful. Because we often, I've got pretty good hearing, but even I didn't catch all that you said, and sometimes I can't assimilate. So having that summary was great, having the graphic summaries would be fantastic. And if I might, when you're doing the maps, if they can be as nearly as possible to the same scale, it kind of helps us to play around with them. I don't know what kind of constraints that imposes on you, but I can ask, and then if it isn't possible, you can say, gee, that is impossible. So I thank you very much. I felt that, whether I agree with every point, that I can see how hard you are working to try to accommodate, to hear what people said. And appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of points that you raised. One, in terms of understanding and processing all the stuff that we've been talking about tonight. I recognize the fact that it's not easy to follow the discussions that we're having, because we've got maps in front of us, and we're pointing to things on each other's pages, and it's a little bit hard to tell. So, you know, bear with us on that. This is, these are the early stages of the discussion, and next week, we will likely, and no decisions are being made on this tonight. So next week, we will endeavor, at our next meeting, we're not meeting next week, but at our next meeting, we'll be able to flesh out some of the conceptual plans we talked about tonight, and be able to have printed versions that you can hold in your hands and look at, and it will definitely be easier to understand at that point. And also, thanks for your comments on the sort of adding and subtracting value and moving things from one side of the ledger to another. It's important to keep that in mind. But just to amplify on that a little bit, too, I guess my point of view on that is that it's not always as much of a zero-sum game as the way that you laid it out might make it appear to be. It's not always the case, maybe it's not even usually the case, that you're taking from someone and giving to someone else. And ideally, what we're doing is we're making the pie higher, so to speak, you know, making the pie larger, and adding value in the aggregate, you know, we're not taking away. So, you know, people have told us, as a simple example, people want services that are appropriate for a village center, food shops and things like that in North Amherst. So if we can do zoning that would promote and encourage that type of development, you can add value for the community without necessarily taking away from somebody. So, you know, it's not always just a give and take. We're trying to really benefit the community a large if we do things correctly. Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
I'd just like to add one piece to the value question, to amplify what Mr. O'Keefe has said, but to also add that when the CECL group was working on this, one of the things they tried very hard to do was to create zoning that did not change essentially the density, or at least the residential density, possible under the current zoning, the commercial, the red area over there. So that there is not an appreciable increase or change in the amount of dwelling units possible under the existing zoning and the proposed zoning that they created. There are changes in terms of physical density because of the form-based regulations. Things are better laid out, things are laid out on the street edge, there are, the relationships between buildings are better, and things are, in a sense, denser in that sense, because it's a village center, as opposed to just being whatever. Under the current zoning, it could very well be whatever, with the same density, but not designed to be a village center. So we need to continually bear in mind that the comparison of value is between what's possible now, which is not a village center, and what's possible under some new arrangement that tries to create conditions under which a village center, a real village center becomes possible. So that's part of the balancing.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Fitch?
Laura Fitch, Pulpit Hill Road, also representing the Puffer family. I just want to point out that this map for Eastman Brook that shows the river resources constraints, the same map can also be drawn on the Mill River through the Puffers' properties. And I've tried to point out a few times that their constraints are so great on their five acres, that very little of it is developable. So in fact, if indeed you folks want access to the river, ideas that we've had around that, and/or investment in the town, something in their property's got to be developable. And that river resources is a huge constraint, and I'd love to see that mapped if we're going to be talking about this constraint here.
Thank you. I was thinking the same thing, and we probably will get to that point once we start looking in detail about the proposals for those properties south of the Mill River Recreation Area. And we're also cognizant of the point that you've raised as well with respect to the alignment of the zoning boundaries with the property boundaries. We'll also need detailed maps, and we'll need to look carefully at that. And unfortunately, that's at odds with Ms. Keller's request that we always operate on the same scale, because it will be useful at that point to have a detailed, large-scale view of just the properties you're talking about, so that we can see that 200-foot setback in more detail and look in more detail at the property lines, too, which is hard to do with the large-scale maps. Other comments? Ms. Holland?
I'm Pat Holland, 105 Montague Road. You didn't address what I'm about to mention tonight, but I just want to say that I hope we can get a, I hope we can get the proposed rules changed so that the height is defined in a way that does not allow for four-story buildings, which I think would just be grotesquely too high, particularly in the area right near Coles Road. Along Sunderland Road, maybe not so much, but maybe four stories would work. I remember in the, at the last town meeting, there was a drawing made by Laura Fitch for the Puffer properties of what I would regard as a high-rise complex right near Mill River. It looked very attractive. I liked that. But I don't think up, the further north you get and the more agricultural it gets, that it makes sense to have it along Coles Road there. And for one thing, the major issue for many of the neighbors there is traffic. And even though I understand that there's a proposal now from the, from the Cindy Jones, that there be a sort of separate driveway behind, parallel to Montague Road, but to the west and behind the present houses, which is an interesting idea. Just the, it does mean that a lot of that land becomes parking lot, which is, I think, is problematical for controlling wetness. But I think to encourage more, higher density, higher, greater heights in the buildings there would be very bad for increasing the population and the traffic on the roads there.
Thank you. I do want to point out that the regulations that we proposed last time around, and we were certainly looking to make changes to them and improve them, but the height limitation and the floor limitation in the North Amherst Village Center was three stories last time around. So you would not have been able to put a four-story building in there.
Three, but I think it was the 40-foot height, is that, that's what I remember, that we were all very alarmed by, even if it's only three stories.
Okay, sure. So the height, we could certainly talk more about, but I just wanted to make sure that people understand that four stories, I'm in agreement with you that that would not be appropriate. And so it would not have been under the previous proposal either. So we definitely wouldn't be looking to increase that.
Yeah, okay. I always think of a story as being about 10 feet.
Yeah, agreed, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Tucker?
The 40-foot maximum, and it was a maximum because there was a minimum and a maximum, a maximum of 16 feet if it's a single story, and a maximum of 40 if it's three stories, is in the NAVC district. It's not in the RVC district. The RVC district requirements are three floors and 35 feet, which are the same, identical to the requirements for the RN district, which is there now. So there's no, along Montague Road, if, to the extent that we're talking about RVC zoning, there is no difference in the height requirement.
Thank you. Yes?
What is the, what is the current density that's allowed under the current zoning in what is now the Coles property?
Under the current, the Coles property in the interior between Montague Road and Sunderland Road? The majority of that property is zoned commercial, which for the most part doesn't allow residential uses, except in mixed-use buildings. So it would depend on how many you could put in under the existing zoning, but you couldn't put single-family houses, or apartments, or townhouses in there currently.
The consultants worked it out to be about 12 to 14 units, depending, per acre. There was not a total number, because you can posit any number of different kinds of development scenarios. There are requirements for the amount of open space that has to remain. There are maximum limits on the amount of building and paved coverage on property. It depends whether it's divided up into several properties, it's all one.
If you want to follow up, can I ask, get it, come up and use the mic and identify yourself, just so that people at home can hear you. Thank you.
My name is Louise Levine. I live at 1133 North Pleasant Street, the corner of North Pleasant and Fisher. So my question just is, I've never quite grasped what the density was currently allowed. So I believe you're saying it's something along the lines of 12 units per acre? And there are, I was told last time I was here last week, 70 acres? So give or take, I-
How many?
Seven? Not 70 acres?
Eight acres. Right, in the triangle.
So what Ms. LaCour just said was that the property, if you exclude Coles Building Supply, the property size is approximately eight acres, is that what you just stated?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, Ms. Keller?
Thank you, Janet Keller, 120 Pulpit Hill Road. Could we clarify the acreages a little bit? Some numbers I have in my head are that the orange NAVC that was in the 2011 proposal was 77-point-something acres. Can you confirm that, or?
I can't confirm that specific figure, but I will draw everyone's attention to the fact that we're talking about several different things here. So what you just, what you just described to me-
Exactly.
What was, and I have never gone through and calculated the acreage of the area that was proposed to be NAVC, but just as a ballpark figure, looking at it, that's probably accurate. The area, the orange area that was
Right.
in the fall proposal. What Ms. LaCour just mentioned, there was a question specifically about the size of the Coles property inside the triangle. So we need to understand that that's only a portion of that area. We also need to understand that the Coles have other properties around there, there's various, people own various properties. So there are a bunch of different intersecting concerns there.
I would also note that we, part of what we had discussed was the area west of Sunderland Road here, which comprises a fairly substantial portion of the orange or salmon-colored area, depending on which map you're looking at, that's not buildable, period. So we need to know which thing we're talking about, and there are many, many different properties- There are many properties which are already built on, which are not going to change, that are in that district as well. So once you start, if you take the total and start chipping away at what's actually developable or redevelopable, it's many, many fewer acres than 70. I see your hands.
I see your hand, Ms. LaCour. I'll just wait until Ms. Keller has finished. Sure. Sure, please do. Is that okay, Ms. Keller?
That'd be great, yeah, sure. Yeah, I think that's what we need to do.
Okay, so the Coles parcel, that is, this is all one parcel? All of this, so Coles Building Supply, sorry, Coles Building Supply is this. All of this here, all of this, all of this is one parcel that's 13 acres. That's all it is. All this one parcel is 13 acres.
And that includes the building supplies?
That includes Coles Building Supply, and the other house, 149 Sunderland Road. So all of that, that's only 13 acres, all that. So if that helps put it in perspective.
Thank you.
What was 70 acres then, the 7 to 8 acres?
Well, so I, if you take out, Coles Building Supply isn't going anywhere. That's about five acres with their warehouses and their, so if you sort of draw a line going north of Coles Road, or if you take out Coles Building Supply, which is just going to stay to be its thing, within this area around our Sunderland building is about eight acres. That's about six acres.
Do you have the same plans for that, as in the triangle?
We have no concrete plans at this point.
It's hard to have plans when you don't have zoning.
Did you want to follow up, or did that answer your question?
I think that's good for now. Something else will pop up, for sure, but, thanks.
Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing any other hands? All right. So I'm thinking this is a pretty good stopping point for the map discussion at this point. So, I'm thinking this is a pretty good stopping point for the map discussion at this point. I don't really want to muddy the water too much further beyond what we've already talked about. Any final thoughts on the, Rob?
I think I'm gonna need a little bit more explanation of, of what's possible north of Coles Road. Ms. LaCour talked about the disturbed areas, and I'm, I'm not sure I, I really understand what, how that changes the protections that are on there. So in order to, okay.
I, I can speak to that. Areas that have been built on are certainly, where there is a building or pavement, are certainly already built on and can be redeveloped. Areas that have been partially developed or disturbed, it will depend on the definition, which will be determined by both the Wetlands Administrator and eventually the Conservation Commission, as to what constituted degraded land, land which is no longer performing any ecological function in terms of the river resource, or, or its original function. And that's a question of degree. So you certainly have any area of buildings and pavement here as redevelopable, and to that degree, certain areas around those structures. Areas that are shown as, if you go on the GIS, you can see there are, for instance, looks like that, areas that are sort of ochre-colored, that's where it's gravel, or there's pavement, or something else has occurred there where the land has been disturbed and is being used for something. A good bit of the land north of, of Coles Road is used for storage of lumber, big pallets of, of drying lumber. And again, it's a question of a judgment called by the Conservation Commission as to what degree of degradation that represents, and what percentage of that area which is disturbed, but not completely covered by a building or something, counts as degraded and can be developed. So it's, you, you have some that you know is degraded, you have some that a judgment call is required to determine.
Rob?
And there was also talk about lands that were mitigated and then can be added, you know, com, used. I'm not, I want, I didn't really understand that either.
That, I believe, is referring to land within the wetland resource area, within the wetland buffer.
Chris?
Go ahead.
I believe Sarah was referring to the first hundred feet of riverfront area.
Right, yeah.
And I think what she was saying was that if there were a structure or something in that first hundred feet, the state is very eager to have that first hundred feet be sort of a pristine natural area. So if you can take areas that are degraded there and create the, a natural area out of them, then I think you get to add that square footage to the amount of area within the second 200 feet that you can develop. You're sort of trading. You're fixing one thing so you can develop somewhere else.
Keeping things as far as away from resources as you can.
Thank you.
Short answer is, it's complicated.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Like everything, everything having to do with zoning.
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna end our map discussion there. I think it would be useful specifically, I, I think we have agreement on the areas, the, the more open areas to the west, so if we could get a sketch of what it would look like without those areas, and maybe more detailed maps showing the proposal that you were discussing on Montague Road.
We can, I can show all three.
That, that would be great.
Okay.
All right, so that, that's all we're gonna do on village center rezoning tonight. Mr. Tucker, did you have anything for us on the other potential zoning amendments, permit findings, and criteria?
Simply to remind you that you had been looking at performance standards. Last time around, we segued away from development modification into looking at performance standards and adjusting the way in which permit findings, or rationalizing the way in which permit findings are organized in the bylaw, and to, to think about whether or not that's something you wanted to go forward with for the spring.
Rob?
I would like to keep pursuing that, but we, we had talked about, I think, so I think we, we talked about having a, a joint discussion with the ZBA about how they feel about changing those things, or at least hearing from them before we start working on it.
When you say you're interested in pursuing it, do you mean with a goal of amendment for the spring, or longer term than that?
If it's possible, but I, I don't know that it's possible, so, yeah, not necessarily for the spring, yeah.
I guess my, my feeling on that is, I also think it's something that's worth pursuing. I don't see it happening in the spring. I mean, we're, it's February now, and we're, we're gonna sign the warrant at the end of March.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
But, but I, I agree with starting with the ZBA also. So at, at some point, maybe in the spring, we could schedule a, maybe a, a joint meeting of, of this body and the ZBA, or some subset thereof.
We have, we have existing drafts that we could use as a basis for conversation.
All right, anything else? So, all right, so the last relevant item on the agenda is future meetings. We are not, we already agreed last time that we're not meeting on February 8th, so our next meeting would be our regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, February 15th. I'm gonna advocate in favor of meeting on the 22nd also. Is that okay with you guys?
Yes.
And let's leave the 29th open at this, unresolved at this point, we can talk about that on the 15th?
Sounds good.
So without further ado, we are adjourned then at 6:22. Thank you, everyone.